Let's call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Seeing no one else recording this meeting, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, everyone. Doesn't seem like we've been apart for too long. I don't see any citizens to comment. So we'll move right on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. Those of you at home and those of you who will be watching later, thank you for taking time out of your evening or day to spend time with us. We'll jump right into last week's meeting. We talked about masking and we had said the committee had set a mandatory mask requirement PK to 12 for all students and staff. On Friday, the Commissioner of Education let us know, and I believe he also did via press conference to the state, that he had intended to go to the State Board of Education Tuesday, yesterday, to ask for approval to mandate masking in all schools, PK to 12, regardless of vaccination status for faculty and students and staff and visitors. Late to the addition to your packet is the official announcement from DESI dated today, August 25. It literally came out at 4:30. So this kind of explains in more depth the mandate and that it right now seeks to go through October the first as we, as we had kind of talked about last week. But they adopted that on the state level and they're looking at now an 80% threshold for vaccination, vaccination for students and staff in middle and high schools. And as it stands now, if that threshold is met, we would submit an attestation form to the state and then we would receive clearance from them to start discussing a differentiated masking policy in our buildings. Now, all of this is subject to change based on trajectory of virus and, and you know, other factors that, you know, that may, you know, come about over the next month or so. But in my welcome message to our district fami-- to the, excuse me, in my welcome message to families in the district on Friday, I'll make sure that I attach this. It also gives, I'm not going to go through the whole document, but it also goes through some additional points of order on the back. But I'll make sure that we get this out to our families. I don't think it's a big secret about the masks, but so that they can see this document. And we'll also post it up on our website and on each of the school's individual websites so that people are aware that this is where we're at.
Any comments?
I just have one question. Do you know if that 80% is 80% of the students or 80% of the whole building?
It's together. It's the aggregate number of students, yeah. Yeah, it's the aggregate number. So we'll see, we'll see. That obviously for us, we now have to start thinking about a process to collect vaccination cards and things of that nature so we can have an accurate count in our buildings. Some of the numbers that we shared last week were indicative of pretty high vaccination rates, which are great. But some of those vaccination rates could be impacted by students going off to college, could be impacted by students not in the Auburn Public Schools. So we have to get that data so we have some good hard data, you know, to, to go off of. So Dr. Chamberlain and the nursing staff and myself, we'll be discussing that over the next several days once we get schools open, how we go about getting that, that data in.
Through the chair, just one other point. I know at our last meeting, Dr. McPhillies and I discussed a subcommittee, but given the fact that we actually have been given the threshold that we were looking for in some metrics, at this time, we feel like there is no need for a separate subcommittee, but we will just try to track to some of the other goals we had for the building.
That makes sense.
Getting kids ready, you know, for unmasking when that time comes if the committee is in agreement.
Sure, absolutely. That totally makes sense. I mean, if they're drawing up the roadmap for us and we have no choice, we're not but to follow. But if things change down the road, as long as you two are willing participants in this, then yeah, why don't we at least hold on to the idea?
Yeah, this will definitely be an evolving situation, undoubtedly. So we'll continue to take it week by week and go from there.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, at the conclusion of our meeting last week, we, we had decided that we would, we would adopt, you know, mitigation measures that we had in place in addition to masks at the end conclusion of last year. But we had started talking about some of the additional measures that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is putting forward with respect to allowing testing in our buildings to help maintain students in close contacts from having to be excluded from school if they are in close contact or there's something going on that, that could be indicative of COVID. So Dr. Chamberlain is going to speak to that in a little bit more depth in your packets tonight. Again, it was a late ad. There's a three, three box kind of graphic that kind of hits the highlights of the three different options, symptomatic testing, test and stay, and routine COVID pool testing. Pool testing, we've talked about before, but the test and stay and the symptomatic testing is something that we're kind of excited about. So I'll let Dr. Chamberlain talk about that and how that could benefit our kids and our families.
Sounds great.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. So I'm excited to share with you tonight some information about an in-school COVID-19 testing program that's being offered through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's being facilitated by a company called CIC. They're the company that ran the testing programs at Fenway Park and in Foxborough. So they're very used to dealing with lots of people. This is fully funded by a federal grant that DESI received so that there is no cost to the district in any way at all. They coordinate all of the testing services. Last spring, when they offered pool testing, they serviced over 500 schools across the Commonwealth. We did not participate in that, but they've already been in many schools across the state with very good reviews. And so I did share with you the three types of testing that in that colored handout, whether it's symptomatic, test and stay, or routine COVID pool testing. I will say that I already did put in the application for this. It had to be done by a certain date, giving us the opportunity to do it or not do it, but at least get our name in the game. So the lots of forms that had to be filled out, lots of information around numbers and that kind of thing that had to be shared with them. But with these three testing options, you can choose whichever ones you think are most beneficial for your community. So I spoke with Leah Garcia, our lead nurse. She attended a couple of the webinars that they offered related to this process. And we all seemed to agree that we still weren't quite invested in the pool testing process, that routine COVID testing, but we were very intrigued by the symptomatic testing and the test and stay. I think we've shared and you've all shared, right? We want kids in school this year as much as we can possibly have them in school. And we feel like these two options really elevate that opportunity for kids to stay in school and be in school. So you'll see that symptomatic testing, this is, this is for when a child begins to develop symptoms when they're in school. So this doesn't offer us the opportunity, if a child wakes up in the middle of the night and is ill, to then, we don't want any child coming to school who isn't feeling well. That's the big linchpin in all of this. If kids stay home and they don't feel well, that's going to help us to keep everyone safe. But we know that kids get sick at school. So if that were to happen, and again, CIC comes in with all the materials. They have a software platform where all the data about this testing is logged along with the people to facilitate it. So I am still waiting for much more detailed information on all of that, but that's how it's been presented. So this, if a child gets sick at school, they would get a rapid antigen test. And if they have very mild symptoms and the test came back that they were negative of COVID-19, they could stay in school. A very mild symptom might be they have a headache, right? Now, we know headache was one of the symptoms associated with COVID-19. But if that's all that's present and they are COVID negative, they would be allowed to stay in school. So again, another opportunity for us to keep kids in school. The test and stay, we feel is really where we can keep more kids in school. So last year, if there was someone who ended up testing positive and we identified a number of close contacts, mostly from outside of school, but nonetheless, close contacts, they had to wait five days, get their test, then they had to wait for the results to then see if they could come back, which in certain times it took eight, nine days to get test results. If that's the case, if there's someone exposed in school and we identify that they were a close contact, as long as they stay without symptoms, they can stay in school, but be tested every day for five days to make sure that those tests come back negative. So we feel like those two opportunities, not only do they keep kids in school, which is our primary objective, but we know it's going to help our families, right? Families were really stressed last year with having to, you know, stay out of work or come out of work to be home with, with children. And we, we really believe that this will mitigate some of that. It's not all going to go away, but it certainly is going to, to help in that regard. So, you know, again, we, those are the two components that we've chosen. If along the way we decide that we don't want to do the symptomatic testing, we only want to do the test and stay, we can opt to do that. It's very flexible that way. And if for some reason we decided to do pool testing, we could add that on as well. So lots of flexibility with that. They provide us with a district level coordinator, onsite collectors and folks and onsite testing coordinators. So I'm looking forward to getting more information about that. But again, there's a tremendous amount of paperwork that has to go in first and we're kind of just starting this process. So there are some things I'm not sure now. But they also help like with the ordering of the binax now, antigen tests, the inventory of those, making sure they're checking expiration dates on all of that. It was recently something in the paper about that. But really, it sounds like a very comprehensive program that with little effort on our part as far as our staff, and it's not going to put any stress on our nursing staff, we'll be able to provide some good supports to kids. So, you know, I'm excited to hear what you think about it or the questions you have about it. But I do think it'll be very beneficial in the long run. And the key to all of this is it's voluntary. So parents will be, will be sent a consent and you, the parents decide, do you want your child to participate or not? If we do not receive consent from a family for a child, they won't be tested, right? So they'll follow a different set of protocols for what happens if they have symptoms in school. And what happens, you'll see, we're going to send out the protocols this week that came from DESI, but it extends the time you have to be out for close contact and it extends the time you have to be out if you test positive. So there are some real benefits to keeping kids in school for longer periods of time. So that's really a very high overview because again, we're waiting for lots of the nitty gritty details. But many, many school districts across the state are participating and we do think this is one more mitigation effort that'll go a long way for our families. So I don't know if you have any questions. I'll try to answer them. I'm learning this as well.
I would actually entertain that motion and then we can, we can ask questions upon set.
Make a motion to allow CIC to work with the school's district if necessary and the nursing staff to conduct onsite rapid COVID testing in each of our schools one appropriate basis parameters described by Dr. Chamberlain.
One second. And we have a second. Yeah, thank you for that presentation, Dr. Chamberlain. Very informative and I'm totally in support of that. And I would open it up to any other comments or questions.
Through the chair, I, I'm really thrilled that we can do this because I know a lot of, like you said, parents are really, you know, pressed for childcare. I guess my one request would be when we send this out to parents, also send them a link to where they can get their child tested if they wake up sick so that they, you know, because it would certainly be very easy to just put your kid on the bus and be waiting because you think you're going to fall. So that's my, well.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think if we could send that out to families, we could also get that on our website and in a number of places where that's easily accessible. I know our nurses sent it out numerous times over the course of last school year, but I'm sure things have changed. So it's a great idea.
If, or even if it could be added to ZipSlip, I don't, I don't know if you could pop off for any of those.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
ZipSlip, I don't know if.
If you could add it or something.
I don't know what, editable or not, but they could, you know, because they have to say if your kid is.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Through the chair, do they know when, I know it's like a lot of paperwork about when it would be able to start. Did they give you a date on that?
Yeah, so they asked us for when we'd like to start and we put mid-September, giving everybody a little bit of time to get into school as well as us to get the time to get all these details in place because it seems like it's a, it's a bit of a big nut.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
This just seems like a wonderful plan. I mean, I think of the times superintendent would send us a message, these five are out because they're exposed or whatever, and we won't have that anymore with this.
And through the chair, I, I believe it will, as Dr. Chamberlain alluded to, I think it really will, you know, again, allow us to keep kids in school. It will hopefully give parents some peace of mind that, you know, I mean, like Dr. Chamberlain said, this isn't a, it's not a cure-all, right? There's certainly going to be times when mom and dad, you know, or the parent, guardian, whomever will have to come and get their child. But, you know, when we were looking at data about our close contacts last year, a handful maybe of close contacts that, that were excluded last year turned positive.
Yeah.
It was very, very low.
Very, very low. So most kids ended up staying up that amount of time when they were really fine.
Yeah, which is a shame.
Yes.
And a waste.
Yeah.
And yeah, and through this year, the other part of this too is again, you know, as I said numerous times last week, it's basically five days a week, full-time in person. There's no remote, there's no anything. And so, you know, it's imperative that we keep our kids in school. They need to be in school. We want them in school. And then again, this is also for staff too. You know, this is, we're, we're going to be able to use this for our staff as well. So we'll be working with the AEA in, in discussing how that would, how that would work, but it would work very similar to that of, of the students. Because that was also an issue last year is, you know, keeping the buildings open because of close contacts and things of that nature.
Dr. Chamberlain, will they have a specific location in which to work out of or will it be through the nurses' office in each building?
We're trying to have a separate location for that. So principals, we discussed that today, they're trying to figure out how they can make that work and where they could put them because the nursing office is really not the place.
They can get pretty busy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we're looking at some, every school is looking at what they can make work for an alternate location for this.
Sounds great.
I have a question. So let's say one student tests positive for COVID, would the whole class be tested for five days?
No, so it would be anybody within that, that, they're actually looking at three feet now. So anyone seated around that student for 15 minutes or more, right? So yeah, no, it wouldn't be the whole class. I think we're going to continue with our communications about things as we would, you know, Dr. Handfield was so transparent last year about when things did happen, letting classes know that somebody was positive. But no, it wouldn't be the whole class.
Correct, yeah. I feel like through the chair, I, so I was thinking about that today because I'm starting to think about my, my welcome message, you know, to families and, and thinking on, you know, the things last year that I think really gave them comfort, you know? And I think one of those was, you know, being transparent with them and letting them know, you know, when we had a positive case or whatever. So, you know, it wasn't, it really wasn't a big deal for me to, you know, to be able to get that information out on a nightly basis. I know many families responded back, you know, kindly, you know, and it was well received. So we'll continue to do that for the foreseeable future. We're also going to keep our COVID counter that we had last year. We were talking with the technology department today about that. So yeah, I mean, people can really expect kind of the same exact, you know, services that they were receiving last year with the addition of, you know, this, these testing pieces through CIC. So, you know, as much as I understand, the masking is not optimal. We're, we're really trying to do our best to make it palatable, you know, for people.
And make school more normal for kids so that it's a much more, you know, expected experience.
That'd be great.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back before you, for what I hope will be the last time, and I believe it will be, is the 2020, 2021 school calendar. When we had originally brought this forward, a few years' approval, we were still negotiating with the AEA and through their negotiations and the settlement of their contract, we had, we had a couple of small changes. The first would be that teacher's last day will coincide with that of students and that the January Professional Development Day that was originally scheduled on the 14th of January was moved to May the 9th. So it's applied with their five days of professional development and what we had bargained in their contract. So it's just, it's two small changes and just need the committee's approval for the amended, for the amended calendar, excuse me.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to include the updated school calendar for the 2021, '22 school year.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll also, I'll also include that too in my Friday email message to families, the updated calendar so they have it. Like I said, the changes are negligible for them other than we'll have their children on the 14th instead of them being home with mom and dad. So I'm sure they won't mind that at all. Just moving on, just quick information, the Fall Special Town Meeting has been scheduled for October the 26th and as usual, will begin at 6:00 PM at Auburn High School. We're in the process of working with the town administration on warrant articles. I believe the warrant closes September 9th. Cecilia, yes, September 9th. So based on what we proposed to do, you'll see those probably at our next meeting on September the 7th. I just wanted to give you that date so you can mark your calendars.
Any comments or questions?
Noting the time that it's six. We're back and not in summer.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's important to know, to note, I should say. Okay, and nothing for teaching and learning? Dr. Chamberlain, only one presentation per evening? That's the, that's the limit?
She's still on some of vacation.
I don't think she's got the vacation.
Yeah, no.
No. I don't think anyone's really had a vacation in a long time. All right, well then, we're going to brighten everyone's day a little bit with the Business and Finance Report. Cecilia?
Good evening, everyone. Happy to see you again. The first item for business I have is the omnibus transfers. At the end of last year, we talked about, you gave me permission to do some omnibus transfers and I said I would bring them back for the meeting. So they're in the packet, one through seven, for your information. It was just a matter of cleaning up things and as things, if there were lines in the negative, I was readjusting. So those are all there for your information. The next item is school department memos to town hall. At the end of the year, I usually provide memos to CFO Casanova with regard to FY21 budget. There's a memo for the FY20 school department articles to carry those forward. FY21 school department articles to carry those forward. And FY21 budget carryforward request. This request is made at the end of every year. It's with the items that have already been set aside as purchase orders that the money's been encumbered, but we for some reason haven't received the product or the invoice to pay prior to the June 30th closing date. So we move that money forward into fiscal year FY22. We just, one of the warrants that you signed for the AP was previous year account and we try to get those paid off as soon as possible beginning of the year. So that, so those are the every year information as well. If you have any questions?
I only have one.
Yes.
When I was looking through all these pages of information that we got online, I noticed there was some money set aside for windows for this building. But am I mistaken or was that like, it used to be there? It was like $30,000 or something?
Oh, okay. That's in the CIP. I was going to get to the CIP balances, but actually.
I have no idea where I saw it. There was some information.
Yeah, no, you're right. No, no, you're right. You did see it.
I did provide an update of the CIP balances. These are capital improvement plan that we get year to year with the town. We did have, basically, we've been kind of on hold here at the Randall Building. We've been trying to wait to see what was going to happen with the safety complex. So we've been kind of holding off on borrowing some of the money. We have had some money set aside and the town, we did, that was part of the $20,000 that we had given to the town towards the project for over by the high school.
The library, yeah.
The $30,000 was what we left there for us just because part of what we were looking into, and I know Mr. Fahey might have the quote with him, but he was looking into getting a quote for the back windows because when the wind blows and the air is, you know, summers, it's extremely hot and in the winters, it's cold and the wind comes through. So we were looking at getting some storm windows and we were thinking that $30,000 would cover that, which we thought would be beneficial to do regardless of whether we stay or not. So we had saved that for that.
Yeah, through this year, we, Mrs. Sullivan's question, yeah, so if you look at some of the windows in the back, we currently have them covered with like plastic because it's just, they're just terrible. And so we're, we're at a point where we're figuring out, you know, what we need to be doing back there. And it's getting to the point that the longer, you know, we're waiting, that we may have to do something. So, but the balance of that line, right, as, as Mrs. Wazbicki said, that was the money that was repurposed and, and given to the town to help with the, the library expansion project.
So are these the original windows? Because they look like the original windows.
I got to tell you, when I lift up the one that opens in my office, I'm going to tell you, I think so because they don't make windows like that anymore.
No.
You could lose some fingers in the windows here.
Well, I opened, when I was teaching at Mary D. Stone, an original window that had ropes. But the ropes had broke, so we pushed it up and pulled it down. And it came down on my arm. It was the end of the day, the kids are gone, I was closing up for the day. My arm's out the window. I can't push, I'm going up with one hand. Talk about feeling stupid.
Well, if we invest in these storm windows, I'm going to suggest that we get the ones that stay up or come down slowly.
No, I'm not going to touch those windows.
Just in case Gail's listening.
Yeah, the biggest risk and liability is on the backside of the building. That's where the majority of the offices are. It's only my fingers and hands and arms that you have to worry about on this side.
On this side.
But that's okay.
That used to be.
Those windows are no match for those fingers.
It used to be a cool place to have outdoor recess, let me tell you.
But I think that's a great idea to look into the storm windows because, you know, we've been looking at this for, for some time now. And even if for some reason the, the safety building is, is approved, you know, how long are we looking at suffering?
It's still, it's still a number of years.
The winters and summers, it may even be something that, you know, aesthetically is a little bit better than, than what we have back there.
Yeah, I would, yes. I know the residents of that, that side would appreciate maybe ditching the plastic and for some, for some windows. So, so we'll see.
And is that something that, that we would install ourselves or we do a contract?
I'm not quite sure. I think that Mr. Fahey was reaching out for quotes, but I'd be more than happy to speak with him and either have him come and report on that or I could come back at a future meeting and let you know where we're at with that.
Yeah, through the chair, he's exploring the opportunity. That's a great question because we, Mr. Fahey and I were talking about this the other day and he is exploring, trying to get the DPW Facilities Division to come over and, and install them. It's just a matter of, you know, what, what it's going to take to take them out, put them in and, you know, those types of things. So, yeah. So yeah, so that, that would be, that would be our preferred option because it's the most cost-effective option. And, and I have to say, you know, just to shout out to our Facilities Division at the DPW, they've done work in our buildings, you know, when I was a building principal, you know, at the high school and in other buildings. They, they do fabulous work. We have some really, really talented folks that work over there, so very knowledgeable, very skilled. And so, yeah, we could save considerable money if, and we have with previous projects. This would just be another one. So he's, he's talking and trying to figure out, you know, what's going to be needed and when we might do that.
We're also discussing the option of potentially reducing the sizes of the windows and maybe like covering some of the window because the windows are huge. They go all the way up. So maybe just, you know, to, to bring the cost down as far as that goes to, so.
You don't like the death ray sun on August?
No. Today, today was brutal.
It's late and hot.
Today was brutal.
The afternoon heat is extreme.
And the other concern with that backside of the building too is with, with our encore program now across the hall. I mean, we really need, we really need to do something, you know, in those windows. I mean, that used to be our professional development room and, I mean, it was, it was warm then and it was cold then. So I think we probably, we'll probably need to do something sooner rather than later.
So I will follow up with this to Fahey and we'll report back to you on that. So, but if you also look at the CIP, the listing, there's been some, some of the things that we, we haven't borrowed for as well. We've been trying to be really cautious about what we actually go out to borrow for. If we don't have all the money in place, we've been trying to hold off on borrowing to lessen the amount borrowed through the town. So we're trying to work with town on that as well, so. And then moving on, I just also provided a year-to-date budget report for you in your, in your packet. It was dated August 18th. Basically, a lot of the salaries have not been encumbered, the full-time salaries, other than 20,000. than teaching stuff, they haven't been encumbered at that time. So we will be getting all the salaries encumbered, and I will bring back a future year-to-date budget report with some transfers for the actual contractual obligations that have, you know, with increases and wage increases. So I will get that back to you. The last item I have for you is, we put together, we didn't have this here at Norbert, we put together a crossing guard job description that we feel is important to have since we do have crossing guards in our employment. So I put that in your packet for your review, and I was hoping to get approval to move forward, that it would be an accepted school committee job description. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the crossing guard job description for the Auburn Public Schools as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there's a vote.
Well, thank you very much, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Do we have anything else for the seat, Dr. Hanfield?
No, Mr. Chair. We just, we need a quick executive session to talk about a couple of matters as detailed on the agenda.
Okay, do we have a note for that somewhere?